Good evening, everybody. The time is six thirty three, Tuesday, eleven, and I'd like to call the committee meeting to order. The first and only item on our budget is the FY twenty twenty two budget.
Sure, give me a second here so I can share my screen. Alex says, yeah, host is disabled. There we go. Thank you, sir. Share. You can see that Alex, everyone obviously can see that since. Okay, so um, tonight, we're gonna, we're gonna give a pretty high level presentation of our FY twenty two budget before I get into it. First off, would love to thank our subcommittee and our admin team. We've spent some countless hours over the last few weeks making some pretty difficult decisions. Hour-long meetings, hour-long phone calls, and, and we've, you know, I feel we've done some really good work as a team. So first off, thank you guys for your effort and your participation. Again, as I go through this, it's, it's really high level. We are, you know, we're trying to solve for a deficit for the upcoming fiscal year for FY twenty two. And, and we have some work to do, which hopefully I will show you guys that as we move along this presentation. So first slide, I always like to start off presentations. These are our strategic plan. Our budget is built around these four, these four areas of our strategic plan. So everything in our budget is built towards these. Next slide is, now, this is from two thousand eighteen. We've, we've shared this before. We've, we've talked about this before, but this is just really a kind of a summary of the towns around us that are funded above net school spending. So this data was taken and put together back in two thousand eighteen. It hasn't been updated since then, but this just gives us a, an idea of, of what other towns around us are getting for their budgets. So again, the net school spending is the minimum amount of money that a school has to spend on education for any given year. And this slide shows the amount above net school spending that school districts are receiving in the towns around us.
So can I ask, I, I know, I said I wasn't gonna do that. I just, so I am seeing this and that we are lower than Holyoke, which is in receivership.
So yeah, so that numbers, that numbers, yes. So, so what you're seeing in those numbers, yes. Now, you bring up a good point. Holyoke is in receivership. So the way they're funded, you know, their, their process is a little different. But yes, we are, you know, essentially receiving less over net school spending than a city like Holyoke. Questions around that? Audrey?
I'm actually, sorry, can you, is this presentation available online somewhere?
It will be, yeah, certainly. No, I don't ever want to put something out before you guys have seen it. Yeah.
Well, the budget presentation will have to be available forty-eight hours before the meeting next week in our office for viewing.
And I think that'll be important that we make sure we say that a couple of times to make it so that there is a meeting next Tuesday.
Yeah, we can certainly remind people that once we're, we're done with this and, and, but yes.
And also, this slide, I know, was updated on our website, and why we're going, Tracy Novak did that presentation. She used the same slide that was available is on our website and our app. I remember that was on Cheryl's, and there was, I think we've talked about this a lot, but I thought it was there. This, we couldn't get updated one because it was, it's not, it's not readily available.
Yes, so this is a part of a presentation, like Stephanie said, that Tracy Novak from MASC put together. This, as far as I know, yeah, it hasn't, it hasn't been updated. I will say, because back in two thousand eighteen, there was the big push for the Student Opportunity Act and all that additional funding. So this is where a lot of, this is why a lot of that information came out. But it, it has not since been updated from a couple of years ago. Any other questions? So this, we've seen this slide before, but this is kind of a three-year glance at our budget, and, and really, this kind of tells the story as to, you know, why we're in the position that we're in this year. I mean, I'll go through each of these sections quickly, but if there is any questions or I am going too fast, or you guys would like informa- more information on it, obviously stop me and let me know. The, the, the big contributors to our deficit this year are the decrease in the required local contribution. And again, that's a, that's a, a formula with many parts to it. That's, that's driven by the state. And as you can see, compared to last year, we have about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars less from required local contribution. As we move to the next line, the additional town allocation, again, this was that, the one-time override that the town voted on twelve, thirteen years ago. And up until FY twenty, we, the town was funding us at that three oh five. Last year was the first year that they reduced it. They reduced it by a hundred thousand. And then for FY twenty-two, as of right now, the information that we know right now, they're planning on reducing it by another hundred thousand. So we're already down about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in revenue compared to last year. The next line is transportation. Again, that's a three-year contract. We just signed the new contract this year. Those numbers stay the same for three years. So that's why you don't see a change there. And then that, that total state slash local revenue line, that's, that's just the sum of the four lines above it. So that, at the end of the day, is how much money per our chapter seventy formula, per our required local contribution formula from the state, with transportation and additional town allocation, that's how much revenue the school should see from the town. But the next line is the town in-kind contribution. And, and these are charges to the school that include retirement for our teachers, health insurance for our teachers, along with some other administrative costs at town hall for their time for processing warrants and payrolls, some maintenance costs in there, and then our charges to the town or the district for school choice out and charter school tuition is all included in that. So again, looking over the last couple of years, from FY twenty to FY twenty-one, it went up about two hundred and forty thousand dollars from twenty to twenty-one, and now from twenty-one to twenty-two, it's going up about another hundred and forty thousand dollars. So when you take the, the total state and local revenue and reduce that by the town in-kind contribution, that eight point one eight eight number, again, that's what I like to call the actual cash or check that the town is gonna write to the schools for their operation for the fiscal year. That next sign, you can see our total operating budget for FY twenty-two proposed, our total proposed FY twenty-two operating budget is ten million, six eighty-nine, three twenty-seven. And that last line shows that we have a gap between what the, the projected funding from the town and what our projected operating budget is, a gap of two point five million dollars. And we, you know, we'll try to make that gap up with, with other sources of revenue. Any questions based on this? Is, you know, we've seen this plenty of times before, but I wanted to go through this to kind of show where the deficit is, is really driven from. And it just comes from a lack of revenue, either at the state level or at the town level, increased costs in kind. Obviously, year-over-year in, in increases to our operating budget, although minimal from year to year. So, you know, all these, we can start to see that, that our deficit, you know, where the deficit comes from. Questions?
So I guess I have one question. I don't know how in depth we want to get into this, but I was curious. Obviously, we, if cuts have to be made in the future, you know, we want to keep them out of the classrooms and out of, you know, interactions with the kids. Have we considered a transportation fee? I know a lot of districts are doing that.
Have we considered what?
A transportation fee for students using the buses. And a lot of other districts are doing that or talking about doing that.
That's certainly an option. I mean, that, that would be a school committee decision. You know, we'd have to, we'd have to.
I'm trying to think of things that we can control, and right now, it's like, there's very little. And that's just a nugget of not taking away from education per se, just something to have on the forefront going forward.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's a good point, whether it's transportation or, you know, we already charged for athletics, but, but trying to generate some other forms of revenue to help keep the gap that we see each year down. I, I think it's, it's certainly a conversation to be had. But it's difficult. It's certainly, it's certainly difficult, especially in the times over the last eighteen months or so, to be asking people to pay for services that they're so accustomed now to, to getting. But again, I don't think that, that should be off the table. I think it, it's a conversation that we should be having moving forward. So it's a good point. And our, you know, the, as we've seen over the last year, our, our revenue and, and, you know, we have two big revenue streams for the school is our circuit breaker and our school choice. And the school choice being the biggest, and, and we're seeing that, you know, school choice revenue is, is going down. So again, it, there's, you know, there, there are some problems that we need to contend with, and, and we need to have plans on how we can kind of recoup some of that lost revenue. So I think those conversations are, are good to have.
In the last few years, was the gap able to be covered by all of those other things?
So, yeah, so, so for FY twenty, which, so I was, I started here in July of eighteen, which was FY nineteen. When I got here, the budget was already passed. To be honest, I don't believe the schools went to the town for money that year. I, I don't know. I do know for FY twenty and FY twenty-one, we did not have to go to the town for.
I don't think, so it's, I think it's like a muckety-muck murky water thing. I don't think the school specifically asked for money to come back, but there was an additional warrant because we had, that's when the Smithville plumbing student started.
Okay.
And so it was, had to be voted on separately because the student moved into district. So people felt like it was an additional ask of the town, but there, there was it was beyond our control.
This was for nineteen, correct?
I think it started in nineteen, and I, I think that person may have, may be graduating this year because they were already enrolled in the program.
Okay.
So I think this would be their third, third and final year. It's, it's been wrapped into that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a little fuzzy on that. So I think some people would say, yes, we went back asking for mon- additional money from the town that year. But it wasn't a necessarily, necessarily a budget implication.
Yeah, to your point, we haven't asked for additional money to operate this, our schools. Yeah, okay.
Is that how you remember it, Jen? That it was, it was, it had to be an additional emergency warrant because someone moved to town and it was outside of the budgetary process. It wasn't a deficit spending, but some people might say, well, you certainly did come back. If it's a warrant, I can show you the ask for it. But I think it was a separate kind of cost.
Okay. Thank you for that. So in FY twenty and twenty-one, Audrey, and I remember this, I was very clear, and Emery had these, and I had these conversations with Emery, you know, with the subcommittee and then with the full committee, that in FY twenty and FY twenty-one, we were able to not go to the town for additional asks, whether it was from some savings or surplus in our school choice account, some savings or surplus from the prior year's operation budget. We were able to solve for that deficit on our own. What I did say in both of those years are, this won't be sustainable. We won't always be able to use surplus school choice funds or surplus circuit breaker funds or surplus operating funds to help offset the entire deficit, especially when we have rising costs in in-kind contribution, contractual salary obligation. So for those two years, we were able to not go to the town asking for any additional money and fund the deficit solely with the revenues that we have and some surpluses that we have. But again, I was clear in those two years that we weren't going to be able to sustain that. And at some point, we were gonna most likely need some additional contribution from the town. So that's, that's where we are for FY twenty-two. You're welcome. Any other questions? Comments? Anything you want me to go into some detail on, Audrey? I know I can see your wheel spinner. And if you want, write it down. You can ask me at the end, too. So I, you know, I did say this is kind of a, a high-level, quick presentation. We are gonna take some questions. So I would like to have that discussion at the end. So I don't want to not address your questions or concerns, but if you want to write it down and we can, we can address it at the end, that'd be awesome. Again, this slide was really just to show everyone kind of where we've come over the last few years and, and what's contributed to the deficit that we're, you know, we're faced with for FY twenty-two. So again, just one last time before I move on. Any questions, concerns, clarifying questions? So what this is right here is just the, just our detail for FY twenty-two. It was in the last slide. This is just for FY twenty-two, and at the bottom, you can see where we get the, our deficit from. So again, chapter seventy revenue, required local contribution, those two amounts together is what's called net school spending. We've talked about that. That's the, the minimum that a district has to spend on educating students. The additional town allocation, again, it's been three oh five for years. The last few years, we've seen a reduction in that amount from the town. Transportation, our in-kind costs, again, a, a big, a big driver in the deficit is the increase in the in-kind costs and how they're calculated and what goes into those, obviously, rising insurance costs. And then you'll see the two point five zero one is the, is the gap that we have from what it costs to operate the schools. And, and I want to be clear, our operating budget has gone up, it's a little over one percent from last year, and, and we're still operating at the bare minimum. I mean, there's no new initiatives, new asks in the budget. I mean, we're, we're kind of just going with, with status quo. So I just want to make sure that, that's, that is addressed, that, you know, we're not, we're not adding anything out, outlandish in this budget for this year. You can see our projected revenue offset. So, and I want to be clear on these. These are projected. Okay, so these include our grants. They include circuit breaker. They include school choice. They include our COVID relief funding that we will be getting for FY twenty-two and, and years beyond that. These are subject and probably will change. These are strictly projections as of right now. They could increase, they could decrease. But, but right now, as we stand, this is, you know, a very conservative projection on our revenues as it stands today. I, I just want to be clear on that, that, that these are, these numbers can change over the next few weeks and months. Once we get a better idea of, of school choice students in, out, our grants, our grants, those formulas haven't been, haven't been allocated yet. So right now, I'm, I'm basing our FY twenty-two grant revenue at exactly what we got for FY twenty-one. It could increase, it could decrease. So I just want to be clear that these, these projected revenue offsets are, it's a, it's a fluid number. And again, the, the biggest number and, and the biggest topic is the deficit. So that's the projected deficit for FY twenty-two at the bottom there.
Not to get into nitty-gritty questions yet, but will we have, like, any surveys or anything for families regarding school choice so that we can get a better understanding of what those numbers are going to look like?
Yeah, so we are in the process of, of doing that. We've, we've sent out initial, we followed up.
Yeah, so we're down to about fourteen current families that were trying to secure placement out of the eighty, eighty-eight, I think. So we, we are at the point now where the names have been given to the admin assistants in the schools to call and either fill out the surveys online with them or, you know, walk them through getting online to fill it out. I believe we have currently eleven. You asked for that information. I'm getting it for you for next week. But I believe we have currently eleven new students, but we're also losing eleven seniors. So.
Have we reached out to families at school choice for this school year to ask about next school year?
Yeah, we are down to fourteen. We have fourteen that we have not confirmed.
Okay.
All the others, all the others have confirmed returning.
One that's school choice out this year or that's homeschooling?
So homeschooling, homeschooling, Megan's calling down to find out if any of them are going to return. But the ones I'm talking about are current school choice. Every year, school choice has to re-enroll.
I think we're, you're answering two different questions. Right, I think Stephanie's asking one question. You're answering a different question.
Are residents, students, school choice out? Are they, are they coming back?
Correct. That, that was my question. Have we reached out to them to see?
This year.
That left this year to go elsewhere, if they're coming back. Because I do think some, I do think, well, hopefully, are going to maybe see some of those residents come back. Or maybe residents who went to private or homeschool potentially re-enroll in the fall.
Certainly, I will write that down, and I will certainly ask the high school and, and, and call those.
Okay, I just think that would be great. I think there was, I couldn't.
Put that down.
Yeah.
Make that call.
Any other questions? So the next slide, I believe, yeah. So before I get there, so the next slide is a list of, we're gonna call them reductions. We're not gonna call them cuts. And we can certainly get into that. So obviously, with a deficit of any amount, but obviously, a deficit of, of this amount, we need to go back and, and see where we can lower costs and, and make reductions and try to come up with some of those costs through attrition, meaning people retiring, through staff and positions that we know are ready or not coming back for next year. And, and those, you know, make those reductions first before we impact something like the classroom directly, or as we've done in other years, athletics. So, so the next slide is, is what what we've done for reductions.
Not replacing.
Proposed reductions for FY twenty-two, I'm sorry.
Not replacing.
So not replacing. And again, these are projected preliminary. They're not set in stone. But this was work done with the admin team, the subcommittee, and, and really, you know, these are tough choices, whether we call them cuts, reductions, we're not replacing, whatever it is, they're, they're tough choices. So I just wanted to give some background before we got into this slide. So it's pretty self-explanatory, but I will obviously go through the list. So we're looking at reducing one of our administrative assistants. We're looking at reducing three teacher instructional positions. And we are looking at reducing four paraprofessionals. Again, these are reductions, again, either through attrition, through retirement, through staff already giving their notice. So these aren't actual cuts. We're, we'll call them reductions for now. Again, these are preliminary and proposed. So what that does, that two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, that brings our projected deficit down to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Actually, before I get into any questions regarding our proposed reductions for FY twenty-two.
Can you tell us how many are, I mean, I don't know, is that, we can answer how many are retirement versus like how many are would be a potential cut?
Every, every, every single one of them is, is notified as that they're not returning. So we're, you know, there's, it's not, you know, layoffs. It's not, you know, it's.
These are people who are leaving.
Who are proposing not refilling the position.
Right.
Okay.
To avoid having to eliminate someone that is returning.
And, and I mean, really, to be clear, this, no, these reductions do impact the classroom. But, you know, as an admin team, we'll, you know, we're obviously gonna figure out a way strategically to make these as non impactful as possible, but these are proposed as of right now.
With the understanding that we're going to the town.
Yeah, so the next point is, so again, they, these reductions of two seventy-seven bring our deficit down to four hundred and fifty thousand. And, and that's the, obviously, big question, big elephant in the room, is that we will, we will be going to the town for some financial help this year. Based on the simple math, that number right now is four hundred and fifty thousand. We're, we're gonna have ongoing, we've had talks with them. We will continue to have talks with them to see what the best way and the most fiscal responsible way for the two of us, the town and the schools, to be able to solve the deficit, the remaining deficit.
So one thing, I know we had talked about in one of our subcommittee meetings, that there were other little things that we do that seem inconsequential, but every little bit helps. And we weren't sure where we were gonna land on that, but do you have an idea where some of that might be a little something that you could touch on or?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so in the grand scheme of things, we're talking like less than ten thousand dollars. So it, it really came from supply lines where, again, in a budget that's so heavy with personnel on any year, we don't have that much discretionary funds to make cuts from. It's just unfortunate because we are so staff-heavy. So, yeah, we did, we did make some, some minor cuts here and there, but it was less than ten thousand dollars overall. It's just some supply line items. There were some savings in, you know, minor savings in other areas that we, you know, we could, we could use. So these were the big ticket. These, what got us to that deficit without really impacting anything else significantly.
And then another question, we just talked about it, that we have sort of unexpected profit from school lunch for this year.
Yeah.
Because of, you know, the reimbursement being higher. So is, I mean, it's, again, it's less than ten thousand dollars, right? So is that something that we can use?
It's not the amount. I mean, I, I, you know, it, it'll be more than ten thousand dollars, but it's a school lunch revolving. So it's very specific guidelines on what we can use that money for. And we can certainly, we will certainly look for ways to use some of that revenue to help offset that, but it's very specific on what that revenue can be used for. And because we have an outside company that runs our food service operations, we don't have a lot of those operational costs built into the budget that I can offset with that revenue. It's just, just unfortunate.
If we have that money, it, it has to go back into that revolving account.
Yeah.
So there's not any other way, so we can't vote to spend separately or anything like that.
No.
I, I'm just trying to make.
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah, I understand the question. Yeah.
Because they're seeing, you know, when we talk about the lunch, and we've been saying, we have a profit for the first time. So I just want to make, it's clear to everybody that that's, it's not like money that we're just like, oh, you know.
Yeah. Unfortunately, no, the, the, the one, the one revolving account that, that does provide us the most flexibility is school choice. And, and as we all know, we use the full amount of school choice to help offset our operating budget. So, yeah, unfortunately, the school lunch revolving is, is very specific in what it can. So, yeah, unfortunately, the school lunch revolving is is very specific in what it can fund. But again, we can certainly look. For things to. To offset with that, but again, because we have a company that that runs our operations for food service, we don't have a lot of those costs built into the budget to begin with, so. So I know there's questions. I will say this, so next week, Audrey, thank you for the reminder, because I'm gonna remind them at least once right now. So next week, we will be having. We do have another school committee meeting, a regularly regularly scheduled school committee meeting. And from five thirty to six thirty, I believe, we agree to for an hour before, we will have our public hearing. Where we will go into, first, we hope that there's. You know, the the public is there and it is on to ask us questions, but we will be going into. As much detail as. Anyone would like. So again, just a reminder, next week, five thirty to six thirty is our public hearing. We encourage, we hope that the town participates and and has questions, has comments, has concerns so that we can. We can address them and and. Town residents, yes, town residents, yeah, yeah, town residents, yeah. So I'm gonna stop sharing, but if anyone wants to.
I'm just gonna pull on the thread that Stephanie put out there, transportation fee. So we are in the last year of a three-year contract.
No, we're in a second year of a three-year contract. FY twenty-two will be the second, so FY twenty-one was the first year of the contract.
So even if we implemented some kind of a transportation fee.
It doesn't, so all it would do would be like to help offset the cost of our contract. Yep, it would go into a revolving account. And we would just help offset the the cost of that with. Those fees that were generated.
So what that would potentially mean is if we knew how much the transportation fee would. Give us, we could ask the town for that special warrants to be less and ask.
Certainly, you're saying to to reduce it by our projected revenue that we would get from charging fees.
Right, but what I'm wondering though is if we asked a fee, if we would lose. People on the buses, so then, you know, it's. So many people.
Saying the same thing, and then I started to think like, all right, some school, they charge your. Seniors to park, you know what I mean? But then what is that?
Well, you do have parking fees when they use it to maintain the lot.
I mean, trust me, I think it could be a flawed thing. It was just something to.
Yeah, my problem with this, that are in a, we would have people, especially those who can't afford it. Not being able to pay.
Usually, usually there's a sliding scale. And usually, I mean, all of that, yeah, is taken into account. And typically, and I tried to double check, so if I'm reading this right. Hopefully, it's, you know, K through six students are guaranteed transportation. Unless. They reside more than two miles from the school, or kind of within that two-mile radius to school. So if you're within the two miles, then you're not. Necessarily guaranteed to transportation, but you know, that's something to be discussed. But beyond sixth sixth grade, then it's not necessarily guaranteed. That's where you might see the fees start to apply. So that's something to consider.
Yeah, cause that was my thing. I thought I read somewhere that we had to provide transportation, but I couldn't remember. Well, we do have that. We don't have.
There is the. My cousin had to pay, she lives in Luton. And she had to pay her younger kids. A a radius. You know, certain certain radius, even on the bus. So they home labeled the kids on the bus. So it was like, you know, two different schools and they would drop. Off at one school and drop off at another school. And part of them guaranteeing the transportation was for this particular amount of time. We wanted to be guaranteed, we had to fill out the paperwork and it was the same thing like three reduced lunch. Didn't qualify. If you had trouble financially, you could have a free bus ride, but they were trying to get some. They were having a bus crowding issue as well, so it was like a multitude of issues, but she had to pay her four years straight for the kids to ride the bus.
So if she lived within that radius, she wasn't guaranteed a bus ride, that meant she was a.
They were like, so it was like Chapin and another school were sharing. On the same bus route, so they were stopping at her house to pick up the other kid that was going to the other school. And she's like, you know, you're, you know, she paid it, it makes sense, but. It wasn't, and then there was, there was a lesser fee for people that in other areas, they were just having a bus problem, so.
And then I started to think too, like, my, I would be one of those that I did the last two miles, but then to go home, my child goes to children's first, so that, like.
Yeah, cause like you fill out your, you fill out your life like they do now for all the paperwork, like, because it's. They might catch the bus at home from home now and then go to children's first. It's the same, essentially the same thing. I mean, you're filling out all the forms anyway, it's just. Where they're where they're going, you know? So that's, that's. The most interesting idea that we I've heard in a while, not necessarily into it.
I'm not even into it myself. I was just bringing it up. I mean, I have here like the definition of it for eligibility is. Students in K to sixth grade who live two or more miles from their assigned school. Mileage is determined from front of the student's residence using the shortest route to the front of the student's school. Also, K to twelve grade, K to twelfth graders who receive free or reduced lunch are eligible for free transportation. So there's that. Part in there to kind of make it, like I said, I'm not even a fan of it. It was just something where I'm looking at, you know. Things I feel like are kind of out of our control and I really hate looking at staff cuts and things like that. It was just a conversation we could at least say we had. Maybe it worked, maybe it didn't work, but we explored an option of something that is kind of in our.
All right, well, I don't love that idea, so anyway, next question.
We all have some good ideas. I've seen this.
I guess my one question is, in looking at the proposed. Reductions. Will there be some additional? Yes, clarification or specificity in terms of what that will look like for students?
Yeah, I would think that our next meeting, we can certainly can, you know, talk about it. The the hardest part is not knowing. If the town is going to to help support our deficit, it can be deeper. And and change the projection of what is cut. So, you know, trying to, you know. We tried to do it without having to lay somebody up, you know. And, you know, I lived through that when I first came here. When sixteen people were given, you know, things things like, and so. I didn't want to go down that road again, so we we looked to places where that would wouldn't happen.
So I guess the sort of the elephant in the room is. We're going to talk, like you said, with the town about additional funding. But have we started to look at what it will look like if we don't get money from the town? Like, has anyone started to make a draft of? Where and how?
Um, we haven't, I mean, obviously, there's, you know, a few things that we would, you know, can. Put on that list. That list hasn't, you know, actually physically been generated yet. You know, with without knowing and and we'll know, hopefully, over the next few days or weeks, what, you know, what that. What the projected deficit will look like and and what help from the town we may get. You know, it's hard to say, it's it's really hard to say, but yeah, you know, there are some things that we can put on that list that will. Help offset this further, but at some point, you know, we may get into actually making cuts to to positions for, you know, positions that are. In the classroom. So and and that may be a conversation that we will have to have, you know, we'll we'll see. Hopefully soon if if we will have to do that. So. No, there hasn't, to answer your question, there hasn't been a an actual list made, but um, we can certainly draft one.
I don't wanna have to do that, but I feel like we probably need to. At least. Come to terms with the fact that we may not get everything that we need and how else it's gonna, how else it's gonna look, right?
I have one more question that Jill had reminded me of. So that projected revenue offset that. Amount, and I know it's just projected, it could be higher, it could be lower. However, I know some of the items that were in there were supposed to be grant funding, that's also supposed to potentially last us more than a year, are we like?
No, so one of the, so, yeah, so we have two, two. Excuse me, two allotments of COVID relief. One that we, well, both of them. We should receive for FY twenty-two, one allotment, which is the S R twos, which is two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And that is lasting us, or that goes through September of twenty twenty-three. So we have used some of that to offset, there's a few things in the budget we helped offset. We helped offset a custodian. An additional custodian with that money, we helped offset. Additional building-based subs at each building and we offset the addition of a substitute nurse. For the district. Again, another another thing is we don't know what the fall is gonna look like as far as the pandemic, right? You know, it looks like we're we're heading in the right direction, more people are getting vaccinated, all of those details. We don't know what the fall is gonna look like. So, you know, we could open up in the fall and there could be no restrictions and and we, you know, everybody's in class full-time. We don't need to do contact tracing, all that, then we can alleviate one of those sub nurses or one of those building-based subs. But for right now, we gotta have it in the budget in case we, you know, to plan on operating that way. So there, you know, that's a big. Something big that's still unknown. We don't know what schools and it looks like in the fall still.
Which is why we need to keep some of that grant money.
So, so, thank you. So the other, the third installment, so S R three, which was just allotted in the the last stimulus. We're getting about six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. That is gonna last us until September of twenty twenty-four. So not included in that revenue offset is that six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Again, and I've said this. We could certainly use all nine hundred thousand dollars that this year and eliminate our deficit, right? But a year from now, we're right back in the same position and and Desi was, Desi was very clear that although there are no stipulations to how you use the money. You really shouldn't be using it to offset your operating budget. You should be using it, especially the third, the six hundred and thirty-four thousand. To get your schools up to. Regulations with HVAC and filtration and and all that. So again, we could use that to help offset this budget, but we've. I've said it and we're all in agreement that we'd be right back here next year with the same problem.
Well, the other thing is, we we aren't a hundred percent sure what the exact amount is going to be.
Yep, that's a projected amount. Yeah, it's a pretty, pretty specific projected amount, but it's still projected.
Use that to pay for all additional cleaning supplies, you know.
It's supposed to also go towards educating the students, getting them back up to.
That money is really. It it feels like a unicorn to me, but like it's not really, we don't really know. What we're getting, when we're getting, if we're getting, and we've already got stuff that we need to spend it on, hopefully, so. I mean, it would be great, but if we do that, we're gonna be going right back to town for, because we're gonna need money somehow to pay for the stuff that we. Should have used that money for.
And the other thing is this is not recurring revenue, it's a one-time.
Exactly.
Stipulation of how this one, these funds are supposed to be used, it is not recurring.
Which that brings me just, and I hate even saying this, but if, you know, the town does support what we do need. Which is great for FY twenty-two, there are still concerns up FY twenty-three. Right, like if we get this one-time amount from the town. Aren't there's, I mean.
Well, that's, that's something that this community's gonna need to work.
I just don't want it to turn into the same thing with the three oh five that we were, you know, we started getting.
Well, just like you, just like looking at slide number three. Okay. This is clear that, you know, other districts are funding their schools above net school spending. You know, and I don't think we are hearing from their schools about deficit problems, you know, like this is. This is something that that, you know, we need to propose, you know, if the town would fund every year. You know, five percent above net school spending, that would stabilize the district. You know, we wouldn't go through this every year.
I've said it repeatedly and and by no means, I mean, some of the percentages above net school spending on that chart are unbelievable, twenty, fifteen, eighteen, twenty. You know, we are, we are no way asking for anywhere near that. What we are asking for is. You know, we're not asking, what we would like is somewhere between three and five percent. And I've said this repeatedly and I will say this until hopefully we have some type of process and agreement in place. If we can agree each year that the school's gonna get three percent or four percent above net school spending. You'll never hear from us. We will know that this is the amount that we're gonna get from the town. And if there's any deficit after that, the school department is gonna be responsible. And and, you know, I feel like if we had some of that. You know, some of that support, again, you'd never hear from us. We we would figure out a way internally to to solve that deficit. And again. We'd have to have tough conversations. It might be teachers, it might be a custodian, it might be this, but if we knew each year that there was, you know, a percentage above net school spending. That the town was willing to contribute, we, you know, that that would, that would be awesome. That would, that would be awesome.
How do you start that conversation? Like how, in what state of the budget process, which is clearly not now, do you start that conversation?
I think that conversation needs to start in the line. And it needs to be a dog and pony show across this community, you know, educating families.
It is, it's a conversation that as soon as this budget gets passed, you know, and and for the most part, I am, I mean, again. One of the, one of the benefits of having a budget that is so staff-heavy, seventy-five, eighty percent staff, like. We already know, once we agree to a contract, what percentage increases to those contracts are gonna be the next couple of years, right? So building my budget, eighty percent of it is salary that I know for the next couple of years, once we would have a contract, right? So a- and my budget, our our budget, those numbers are built two or or three years out. So it is having those conversations in July with the town. We've talked with them about deadlines that each side needs in order to. Get, you know, each side information in a timely, in a timely matter, so we're not up against deadlines like we are. At the same time, I think, and I've said this too, like, we need to take responsibility in in not doing enough to educate our families and the town on. Exactly what it is, exactly what we do in the schools, how the schools are operated. And I've said this, like, we should invite families in, come in, walk the hallway. See what's going on in the classroom, see how old the high school is, see how old the gym, you know, like, we need to take it upon ourselves and take some responsibility to do that. We also need to get out there and and educate our families so that when we go to town for, perhaps in a town like this, and we're asking. In a year like this, and we're asking the town for some additional money, we have the support of two, three hundred families on on town meeting floor who. Have no question about what's in our budget and have no question about what the objective of the school department. And have no question about what the objective of the school department is, and they will, without hesitation, raise their hand to support our budget, so. Some of that responsibility falls on us, and, and, and we are, have already talked about what we can do to change that as far as in, you know, in the administration. Um, so, so we, we, we should and we will take some responsibility for that, but at the same time. We do need some help, like, we are operating at the bare minimum, um, we need some help. We, we, I, I, I don't, I can't say it any other way, we need some help, um. And those conversations need to start earlier, for sure, but the communication has to be open, and it has to come from both sides.
Well, even like right now, I'm thinking of, you know, we're not mentioning about that public hearing, are we going to reach out to families in another way, and, you know, email, which.
Again, so we met, we met as an admin team today to finalize all this information, and we said, you know, again, it's obviously late in, in the process now. Um, but I, I said, um, once our budget is passed, once it's adopted, once July first comes and, you know. Most of this stuff's in place, and we start working on, you know, FY twenty-three. FY twenty-three budget process is not going to look anything like this one, right, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna essentially go back to the drawing board, we are gonna start from square one. We're gonna do as much possible to educate the town as a whole, finance committee, select board. Board of Health, whoever it is, and then along with families, we're gonna do whatever we can to educate the people. So that they know, when we go to town meeting again and ask for money, that they can support it, that we're not just asking for money just because we want two extra custodians, or we wanna. Replace a baseball field or something, we're, we're there because we, we need that, so, um, we've already talked about it, um, I think we've had some good ideas, um, so. But we need help.
I have a couple things I want to say first, like South Hadley on this slide number three is showing twenty point nine four percent above, um, net school spending. And they have, they're having financial issues, they're having massive cuts. Um, and so, to me, I want to be careful that if we say we're getting funded three to five percent above. That we may not ever have to have a situation, I mean, they're getting twenty point nine, thirty-one percent more. And they're still having trouble. Right, but I, I just as an example, they've been having some, they've been having to make some cuts the past.
Yeah, and, and that, that slide is really used just as a high level, like, you know, hey, like, we're just not getting the help that we need, but we shouldn't be relying on that. To say, you know, all these other districts don't have any problems financially or physically.
Because I feel like, you know, I, I don't want it to come across like we're, we're pointing fingers, we're kind of wanting to put a, a spotlight on it. But we're not pointing fingers, because every, everywhere just about has some kind of money issue now and then, so. So that's the first thing, the second and third thing are sort of tied together, but in Granby, it's really a bigger issue, because it's. No one wants to pay more taxes, but everyone wants to have, well, not everyone, a lot of people want to have. Good education and talent, um, and there's, there's nothing else here to be able to offset, so it's. Part of a bigger issue, it's a systemic issue, it's, um, something that the entire time I've been on school committee and for years before that. Um, that, you know, you look around and it's, the problem is, there's, there's no money, and. All, the only reason that we get is there's no more money is because the dump doesn't exist anymore. But unfortunately, the dump has been closed since twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen, twenty thirteen, I said, twenty twelve. I don't know, regardless, but that, we can't use that as an excuse anymore, like, we all need to start putting our thinking caps on. And try to come up with some ways to get some funding, um, for the town. Um, so it's, you know, we have to all be in this together, and, you know, I appreciate that Jen's here. Um, she's been coming and spending a lot of time with us, um, as a, as a liaison between the select board. As school committee, and sort of a little bit with, for Finn Town a little bit, and certainly with Chris Martin, and, um, I just, I appreciate that. And I think it's helping, um, and, you know, we've got a lot of work to do, and it's. You know, I don't want to say that we're not gonna have trouble next year, because we know that our. Numbers reflective for next year are going to be worse for school choice out and homeschool, and the number of students in and our enrollment, and our chapter seventy, and our circuit breaker, all that. I mean, we, and we're not gonna be the only, only place around that, so many people did so many different things, private schools, charter schools, because of COVID. And there's gonna be a domino effect, and we're just at the precipice of it right now, and it's unfortunate, but it's, I feel like it's pretty true, we're, we're not gonna be like, able to. Go into this starting July one with a new fiscal year and be like, okay, we're gonna do this budget thing a whole different way, and magically have it be better. We're gonna have a couple of years where we have to climb out of this hole, and it's not because of, I want to make it perfectly clear, that it's not because of lack of. Oversight or poor management, it's sort of a circumstance of the times that we're in, and I'm sure the town of Granby overall is gonna have some. Turmoil from this whole COVID thing as well, just like, you know, lots of other school districts and companies and businesses and everything, um. So we have to be careful, um, how we do this, but it's certainly gonna be an uphill battle. Um, but, I, you know, I, I don't think that there's an easy fix, and would I love to have us at, you know. Five percent over net school spending, absolutely, like, who wouldn't, you know, um. Goodness, based on this chart, I'd be happy for two percent of the net school spending, right, um, half percent, really, but. I think there's a bigger thing. Play here, we don't want to have the schools funded to cut the police department, or cut council on aging, or. Not have anyone be able to mow any lawns around town, you know, like, we have to be careful that it's a balancing act. And I just want to be, no, I'm here for school committee, I'm here for my kids, I'm here for the betterment of the town, but I think. I just want to say that, you know, no one wants to do anything, like, we've got to find a balance, and I don't know that I know where the balance is, but. It's, it can't, we just have to look at things differently overall, that's all. That's my soapbox for a moment. Anybody else? So, do we, um, not hearing anything, um, do we then make a motion to? Um, approve this budget as it stands, even though it's still a deficit budget? And then, um, so we can move forward to the, um.
Public hearing?
Or, or what, how, how do we, how do we proceed?
So you're, really, all you're doing tonight, um, not all you're doing, but what you're doing tonight is voting and approving. That eight point one million dollar number, it's on, I can either give it to you or it's on the slide, so it's, it's really. You guys are making a motion to approve the eight one eight eight zero four eight number, right? Really, how we get to that and all that work getting to that number is, you know, the ongoing conversations that we, that we have to have, but. Really, all you're doing tonight is, is voting on and hopefully approving that number, and then, and then we can. Get back into it.
Right, because ultimately, that's the budget that we were, um, talking about, and I just want to ask a question. Um, for everybody for clarification purposes. Jen, this is something you said in our meeting the other day. Is that just yesterday? Is, we can vote on this. We can ask for the town to come up with additional money. It could not be voted on, and then we will have to come back and fix this number, right? So it's clear as meant to me, but hopefully it'll be clear to other people that we are, as school committee, voting to move forward this budget. But it doesn't, this does not mean that we're done.
It's, it's, it's a number that we're voting on, but how we get to that number is still of, of work in progress. It could, but as we know right now, we, we don't know anything else, so, yes, as it stands, as it stands at seven thirty-two tonight, that is the number that, um.
Understand what I'm saying with that, okay?
I have a really perspicacious question, can we vote when it's not on the agenda to vote?
It's, it was, um, it doesn't have to say.
Okay, just to under, okay.
Okay, what?
She was saying, she was saying it doesn't say vote next to the.
No, 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 not, not that, um. We're voting on the budget as it stands, as, as it stands today.
So what he said is, we're gonna, um, vote on this total top of this town allocation to school line item, which is eight thousand one eighty-eight oh forty-eight. Eight, eight million one hundred eighty-eight thousand forty-eight dollars, and that is, that encapsulates the deficit. At this point, so we don't know how we will get to that number, we have made some recommendations. For, um, not, for, not replacing some people that are leaving, and we still have a, a deficit remaining. And we're hoping to work with the town to close that, but in order to be able to go to the next step and have our public forum. We need to have a voted on, approved school committee budget, and we're up against a deadline, so we are essentially. Trying to move forward, because otherwise, we won't have anything to put on, on a lot.
So we're, we're voting to approve as of whatever today is. The eight million one hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
So, so this helps you, it's a preliminary budget, right, it's, it's a preliminary budget as of seven thirty-four on. May eleventh, if that helps you. I, I, I know, I know, I know.
Okay, go Jen. Any other questions, comments, final discussion?
Um, I, I will say before, so, does anyone have any specific, we can talk offline, but any specific questions that they may want Jackie to. Write down now, so that we can address, um, from now until the public hearing, if you want to wait till the public hearing, I just, I just. Um, want to give everyone a chance, um, if there's something that hasn't been answered so far tonight, or. And even if you think about it, you shoot me an email, shoot Jackie an email, um, that's really the point, if, if anything comes up over the next. Few days to let me know, and we'll make sure that we address it for next week.
Great, so as it stands today, this is what it is with. With the anticipation that there may be other changes, okay?
Yeah, I hope I do win a big lottery. If I win enough money and I donate it to schools, and I haven't made that for myself.
You can create an endowment.
The Jen Bartos deficit fund, that's what we call it.
She went to the whole school.
My main theme is Newberry, so it would be Newberry and auditorium, I swim in high school as a Newberry, and then there'll be like the Bartos building, I'm all about it.
Not that you put any thought into this, but if, if you did, if you did, then that's what it would be.
Every time, every time I get a lottery ticket, I want one of those ridiculous large things, that's what I say.
So is this part of the discussion?
Any opposed? Okay, so it passes. So, public forum, uh, next week, just a reminder, and, um, it'll be at the standard time of six thirty.
Wrong, five thirty, public forum is five thirty. The public forum will be before our regular school committee meeting.
Oh dear, look at that. So, anyway, scratch that, five thirty. So it's not right on the.
I mean, I don't, so, I don't know if it has to be, there's no time limit, um, it could be six to six thirty. Five to six thirty, I wouldn't say any longer than that, I wouldn't say obviously any less than a half hour, but.
I guess when we were discussing it last week, I thought basically we were gonna have our school committee meetings, like, put it into that spot, and then our school meeting would. Seven thirty or whatever, but I'm fine with the five thirty.
The five thirty?
So, so I, um. So there's not an agenda for that then, I thought it was part of the agenda, it needed to be part of the agenda.
No, it's just, it, it is a.
Standalone, but as we've done it the last couple of years, we, we just, um, did it on the same, I know we definitely did it last year like that, I'm not sure about. The year before, but we just did it, um, before our regular scheduled school committee meeting.
Okay. So, alright, so there's that, um, and then the next thing is, I know that we have an executive session. What I, we extended our last executive session, so do we need to vote to go back in, is there, is there anything separate that we need to discuss about? Executive session, or are we just reopening the one that we extended the last time?
We're not reopening it, you're just continuing it, you just never closed it.
You're just continuing, you still.
You don't need to vote, you just need to, you just need to inform that we're going into.
If you have anything other than.
What we were talking about.
We have to still vote to enter into executive session, so that's what I'm asking is clarifying, is it only the one item?
Yes.
Okay, so we will, we don't need to vote to enter into executive session because we're still there. Um, but this will be the end of our, um, we opened, open part of the.